We record again.
Okay.
All right, and being recorded, so we're ready, right?
Mm-hmm.
I'll call the meeting to order. City Council meeting for the city of Holiday Island. A regular meeting, August 17, 2021. Let's stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
We'll call.
Councilman Bittman.
Here.
Councilman Mills.
Here.
Councilmember Graves.
Here.
Councilmember Elwood.
Here.
Councilmember Dumas.
Here.
Call present.
Mr. Mayor, I declare a forum. Any questions on the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Lynn made the motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ken seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. We do have minutes to approve. We have the minutes from our July 13 workshop and the minutes from our July 20 meeting that Wes distributed. Is there any questions about the minutes? Any corrections?
I had some changes for the July 20 meeting.
Okay, how about on July 13?
Nothing for me. Oh, under number one, the resolution 23, actually, I, we have an incorrect spelling of Mr. Balance's name, the second time it was used in the paragraph, so it should be spelled B-A-L-L-A-N-C-E.
I'm all in that. Okay.
And also, we're, the sentence right before that spelling that says, "The contract proposed for this service is posted on the city website." It should be, "Information about the grant opportunity is posted on the city website." There's, there is no contract yet.
That was where?
That was right before the second spelling of Mr. Balance's name in the middle of the paragraph, where it's spelled with a V.
Wait, says, "The contract proposed for this service."
Yes.
Cross tab, can you replace it with?
Information about the grant opportunity is posted on the city website. And then, when you get done with that, I had another one. Oh, I made a corrected, I have made the corrections into the Word document that I could send you after the meeting if you don't want to write them down.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, the next place was the number four, report on ward creation workshop. The sentence in the middle of the paragraph that begins, "Ward maps were provided the next day and population estimates were," and I think the sentence should we read, "Population estimates were determined to support an ordinance to establish the ward maps." The way it was worded didn't make a lot of sense to me.
Okay, or you're saying ward maps were provided?
The next day.
The next day.
And population estimates were determined to support an ordinance to establish ward maps. And then, following that, the next sentence talks about distribution of the ordinance, and I think that should be rewritten to say, "The ordinance proposed will be posted on city bulletin boards as well as the city website and social media." Yeah, you can get that wording from me. I'll send that to you.
Yeah, Lynn, if you would, just change the Word document, send it to Wes. All right, proposed corrections. Do I have the motion to approve the minutes from July 13 and July 20?
I move that we approve the July 13 minutes and the amended July 20 minutes.
Lynn made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jerry seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right.
It says, we're back, we're back.
I'm not the council, but in the future, I'll send it to the council.
Okay, thank you.
I got it back. Maybe it was just Kathy joining.
I don't like to come to meetings. I'm going to administer that myself.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Linda's network connection's a little bit unstable, but it keeps coming
back. I have a monitor going on my home, on my internet connection. I've had 91 disconnects in the last six days, amounting to over half an hour worth of time, so Cox must be having trouble with their internet. But it keeps coming back, so it's keep.
Okay, I think we're good now.
Did we both approve the minutes?
Yes. Okay.
Lost track of where we were. All right, ceremonial recognitions, proclamations, and memoriam. I'd like to bring up that Tim Sephranski passed away.
Oh, he did.
We probably know Mary more so than Tim, because for the last couple of years, Tim's kind of been shut in. But Tim and Mary are longtime Holiday Island residents. They are in the culling business, and they were very active in the Holiday Island Singers, going back far enough. Tim was a golfer. And more recently, they donated to the city their very, very nice printer. When they closed down their culling business, they donated their printer to the city, which I use virtually every day. So I don't know any of the arrangements or anything yet for Tim's services. Terry talked to Mary this afternoon, but he was a nice guy. He'll be missed. Any other ceremonial recognitions, proclamations? During that, we'll move up.
Mayor, in the, one of the minutes, it mentioned that proclamation that the lady forgot to leave.
Yeah.
Do we have that back?
No. I'm going to put the stickers on the signs, and we'll try to, we'll try to catch it on our birthday next year, later in the year. Do we have a financial report?
Yes. And I had sent those out. First, shall I go back? I think I wasn't here the last meeting, and didn't take any action on the June financials. Were there any questions? Okay. How about on July? Any questions on that? Where we ended up in July with $79,000 in the general fund and $65,000 in the street fund.
So we're running ahead of what we initially budgeted, except, you know, we missed the first three months.
On a month-by-month basis, we're running ahead of that for the year.
And then, the general fund is primarily, primarily the sales tax is running ahead.
Yeah.
So I'm taking, I communicated to Dan, you know, we didn't get anything, any turnbacks for January, February, for March, but the way it's running, and if the sales tax holds up, by the end of the year, our general fund revenue will probably be within ninety.
We didn't budget for any for this year because we didn't know what the outcome would be of our discussions with the county, but between our attorneys, their attorneys, and the discussions that we've had, we believe that we have an agreement with the county that they do owe us that property tax for roads this year. So we're, in September, we would expect to see our first check.
Well, it could be next month, because I think they distribute monthly, and I assume they're receiving payments monthly.
So next month, September?
Yeah.
Yeah, that might give us distribution for the August collections.
Well, hopefully, yeah. And hopefully, going back to January.
Yeah, well, they said that they would give us all we get coming, so.
Now, with that said, does anybody have any questions on the financials?
No.
We don't spend a lot of time looking at, at budget versus actual year-to-date, you know, forecast and stuff like that. I think going forward, you know, at least before we get into the budget process for next year, we probably want to do more of that and come up with a system of being able to track performance to budget.
Once you get that loaded on the south, county software, you do that.
Yeah, it'll be there.
Yeah. And then, and hopefully, I am told, there, we received some of the supplies, but not much. We don't have the check printer yet, but then, they were going to start the end of August and work with us, get some of it loaded and get it going early September. I hope that happens.
We are getting questions about, you know, you budgeted this much, and we don't see what you're doing and everything, so we do need to, I mean, we post the financials every, every month on the website, so people can see what our health balances are against the budget. But what, what they don't get is an explanation of, you know, if we're not spending on what we said we were going to spend, why not? And if we appear to be spending too much, what are we doing about it? Stuff like that. So we'll try to get some kind of a report out before the end of the year, so that going into next year, we have that month-by-month performance to budget number to look at. Generally speaking, we're, money is coming in, and we're not really spending anything. Most of the expenditures in the general fund are scheduled for the end of the year, or when we make the payment for the fire department. It's going to be the big chunk. And as far as the roads with the district and the city agreeing to suspend the paving program for this year, that one is just going to roll over into next year and be used to the city match on the big grant project. So we're doing good. We just haven't communicated the plan very well to the public. Okay, standing committees, planning commission. Lynn, I asked Linda, just for the, for the record, for, for the public and for the record, to just give a little brief summary of where the planning commission is at.
We met last Tuesday and passed eight resolutions, basically setting up our planning commission as far as officers and how we'll conduct business, how we're going to report what we do.
Budget.
And the budget, the fact that we have to budget amounts, and we have to have authorization from the city council before they spend money. Since then, I've been working on the next step in the project of working on the planning map, trying to find out what we need for information to populate that with what we have that we find in our declarations or reservations. And there's been some, I guess, some thought put into that. And the suburban improvement district has existed for 50 years, and the zones in our community have been defined by unit block and lot designations, so we'll probably use that kind of a designation rather than a neighborhood, or create something new and have to be cross-referenced. So we'll do that for continuity of identification. During our campaign for incorporation, we campaigned on protecting the current constraints of those covenants, so that has to be, I think, our mission as we move forward and working on the plans for ordinances and regulations that support the planning map and the master plan. So I have done a little bit of research on that. I found that on the Carroll County website, on the Assessor's site, they have 71 units listed, and of those 71, 36 of those units, I don't have a copy of a covenant for it. So we'll have to do some investigation with the county or with the planning commission that's up the street to see if they have copies of them. Go ahead.
And because they're on the web, on the Carroll County website, that means there are properties on the tax roll with those, with a legal description.
With a unit.
That includes that unit block and, and stuff like that. So another little bit of information that we'd like to find out is whether there's gaps in the, in the numbers that are, that had been assigned. What was the intended use for those numbers that had been used? There's some logic to how numbers were assigned. You know, ones are basically units, I mean, unit numbers, like 101 and stuff like that, tend to be in a, in a particular area, or like the island, a lot of the units start with 200, maybe all of them start with 200.
No, we're in unit 117, not in 118.
We're 110.
Maybe 200 is up in the loft stand.
Now, that's 300.
Anyway, there, there seems to be some logic to how the unit numbers were assigned, and we're going to have to understand what that logic is, because someday, it will be the city planning commission assigning those numbers. And, you know, we, things pop up all the time that we, that we say, hey, oh, yeah, we're going to have to do that long-term, like one that I thought of the other day, is I, I think that the current planning commission assigns us the street numbers. And so we need to know what, what that is. What is their master list of, of street numbers? Is there a street number assigned to every single block and lot in Holiday Island already, or is that something that we have to figure out if somebody wants to build a, build a house and have a street number? So there's a lot of, there's, there's big picture things. There's also a lot of little detailed things that we need to figure out, too. Any else?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, you know, I think we covered in the planning commission meeting that before we can start passing ordinances, enforcing things like zoning, you know, and everything like that, we have to have the planning maps, that's step one. So soon as we get past that, then we can start passing ordinances.
I was looking at some things today, too, things that I have to do, and I think there was a comment that when you pass ordinances, you need to give me three copies, or maybe a edit time?
Well, we, we said in our formation documents that we will recommend ordinances to the city council by a resolution process. So we'll have a resolution that, that the planning commission has decided there's a need for an ordinance, and there'll be an ordinance attached to it. That'll be brought to the city council for its approval. So they won't, the city planning commission won't be passing ordinances.
Okay.
Just recommending them.
Special committees, broadband grant application. Gary, you want to update us on where you are on that?
Yeah, I talked to Rodney Balance, who's the gentleman's handling the grant application. We're proceeding on that. He had an interesting conversation with a business owner across 23 in the Park Street, the street, what street that is, but who requested the possibility of improving internet there quicker than what the pipe rock project that we're trying to get. And he expressed Rodney's possibility, wireless antennas, point-to-point, where he has line of sites as we, the people, if possible. I'm going to get you hooked up with the city district manager to see Rodney's part deal with him, to use the water tower to go up as high as he can and see if there's, you know, some we need to leak, too. So that's a good news report. We're part of the, he's working with the county, Holiday Island, lead the angering for us grants, and he's a mountain grant writer that's come to get the help, for this of a help, and we hope that sometime early September. There's an awful lot of information floating around on the, you know, on the relief package or whatever it is.
American Rescue Plan Act.
Yeah.
Now, there's a lot of money there, but.
Big fight.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, he feels very confident we'll, we'll get the engineering study. Now, the next step, you know, will be a big crack for that, but, you know, ask a bit of good news about possibility of doing some point-to-point wireless where he can.
As far as the rescue plan money, of course, we're not in the automatic disbursement of payment one and payment two.
So any money that we're going to get, we have to ask for outside of the program, and...
Has to be redesignated by the state.
Yeah, we'd have to get the governor or somebody to, to show a little money our way. But I, I'm still confident that we can do that, because I think everybody realizes that we got screwed. So, and that gets me to the next thing on the agenda, the Arkansas Department of Agriculture survey on water system infrastructure needs. I think we mentioned this maybe in the last meeting, but if not, the governor has a task force that's studying ways of spending all of this money, the American Rescue Plan Act money, and there's also money left over yet from the, you know, trillion-dollar one before that, that they're finding out that it's, it's really kind of hard to spend a couple of trillion dollars. You gotta work at it.
Well, I can take it to Vegas. Yeah.
So this, this committee, the steering committee, asked the Department of Agriculture to do a survey, take a survey of what the, what water and wastewater infrastructure needs are in the state. They would like, they wanted to see one kind of rolled-up number, you know, is it, is it billion dollars, is it $10 billion, is it $100 billion? What is the number? And so the Department of Agriculture did put out this survey, and in listening to several meetings about it on the, with the municipal league, it became clear that the city could work with a district to, to use that money, whatever money would, would come from that, because there's a lot of cities that don't operate the sewer and water.
Right, and charity village, but.
Right, and, and we don't. So, so that it was made clear that the city can work with a district to either appropriate the funds or to sub-grant the funds, depending on how they're allocated. So I got with the, with the district, Danny Presley, and Lawrence Love, and I went over and met with ESI, the engineering company for that, that works for the district. And they knew, they already knew all about this survey, because they worked with a lot of cities over in, they're in Springdale, they work with a lot of cities in northwest Arkansas, they were already working on filling out the survey for, for some of their other planning cities. So they jumped right on this, and they don't, when they get involved in a grant project like this, they don't charge the district, and they won't be charging the city to do the engineering of, whatever engineering is needed upfront, to do things like fill out the survey and to apply for the actual funds. They, they bank on, on us getting the grant money, and then they manage the project and take their cut out of managing the project, so. So they were very willing and eager to do that. We discussed what the major needs were in the district there. It kind of boiled down to finishing getting the pressure regulating valves in, that I think there's still five left to be installed yet. We've been kind of on, on the verge of getting that project done for about three or four years now, and so with our limited staff in the water department, having them do the installation of those valves is, is, you know, holding things back. So we included that in the, in the estimate, and, and then we, you know, based on the fact that, you know, the data shows that the majority of the leaks are on four-inch mains and on service lines, we decided to, to define the project as replacing not all of the four-inch mains, but probably, I'm going to guess, at least 70% of the four-inch mains in Holiday Island. That, and that justification would be to mitigate water loss and to replace old, you know, 50-year-old pipe material that just isn't holding up. So it's a rehabilitation with the benefit of mitigating our water loss. The estimate on that was seven and a half million dollars. So we are going to have to, that's the number we went with, though. We're not trying to hide anything, you know, we, you know, and I think it's about time that we put a dollar figure on what it's going to cost to fix the problem, and that's the dollar figure. Of course, that would include replacing the four-inch line with six-inch line, heavier gauge pipe, replacing the service lines as we hook the customers back up to those six-inch mains, and then repairing the roads that, that those mains are buried in.
Dan, will it also include re-betting the lines?
Dan, will it also include re-betting the lines?
That's kind of given that.
Okay.
When they put the new six-inch line in, they would bed it properly. So, um.
Or put it in sleeves? Would they put it in sleeves?
I don't think so. If it's a six-inch pipe, uh, the, you know, the proper wall gauge material in proper bedding, I don't think it would be a problem at all. The, the, the abrasion problem with the existing water lines is because there's rocks in the bedding material.
Not the right type of material.
And the, and the pipe is laying on top of the rocks, you know, for fifty years.
The, you're going to replace, you're going to replace all the service lines too? Because that's where most of the leaks are.
That's where a, a good portion of them are, but I would, I wouldn't go so far as to say it's most of them.
Most of the whole place here.
But yes, it would be, I mean, when, when we, when they hook those, those new mains up to meters, they would put in, uh, the proper service lines. The next step is we're going to have to take that and break it down into digestible phases. Because I don't think that there's much chance of us getting seven and a half million dollars in one, in one shot, just asking for it. But there might be a good chance of getting two or three million. So we can break the project down into phases, like do the area around the end you've down in that low, the lower area, high-pressure area, do that area. And then maybe another phase would be to do Mission Hills between those two areas.
Those are the worst ones.
That's where the most, the majority of the leaks are. So anyway, we, we're still working on that for, when Bob Nayar gets back next week, we're going to sit down and look at the project and see how we can break it down into more reasonable-sized projects and then, um, write it up in some format and get it in the hands, hands of Senator Ballinger and Representative Burrow and our contacts inside the governor's office and see if we can get some money allocated to us outside of the automatic windfall that the cities are getting.
Dan, will this be discussed at the next High-Sid meeting?
I don't know what.
Which is next week, I think.
It's next week. I haven't seen it in any kind of books.
I mean, do they have to, does the board have to approve any of this?
There was a question on the survey that said, um, would you be willing to, um, share in the funding? In other words, would you be willing to do an eighty-twenty split, which is the normal split on grants like that? Although it didn't say that, it was just a kind of a generic question. You know, are you willing to share in the cost, yes or no? And, um, ESI said that if you, their opinion was that if you checked no, your request goes on a different pile.
I can see that.
So, uh, so we checked yes. So before we would move forward with a specific request, um, that might get an okay stamp on it, we would have to know that we could cover between the city and the district, that we would be able to cover whatever match might be required.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So yes, that would require approval of, uh, of the VOC. And if the city was going to provide any of the match, then the city council would have to approve that.
But in the Department of Agriculture's explanations that they put out, they continually emphasize that these were not applications for funds. They're only gathering information to see what the needs are.
So it doesn't hurt anything to check the box, I'm sure.
Yeah. If, as soon as this, you know, the sooner after the steering committee sees all of this need, the sooner we get an actual grant application in front of somebody.
And it sounded like they wanted to move pretty quick to get this stuff rolling, so.
I believe, um, the, I believe the instructions to the cities that did get the automatic grant money and were intending to use it, or not grant money, but the automatic COVID money. And if they were intending to use that money for water and wastewater infrastructure, that they were instructed to put it in the survey anyway. So there's a certain amount of double-dipping probably built into the survey. And, um, and that would probably come to light if, if their, if their request actually turned into, I mean, if their survey actually turned into a request, if part of that was already funded with COVID money, that would probably be lopped off right away. Whereas we don't have anything to contribute towards it.
And none of this money can be used for work that was done before March third.
Pay, pay old bills, in other words.
Yeah. And they can't use it to pay off debt either. If it's for work before the specific date. Now, I think the department was wanting this information in, what, last week?
Last Friday.
Last Friday.
They said it in Thursday, Wednesday, or earlier.
Okay.
So it definitely needed to be defined. It was interesting, I was watching Springfield News the other day and they were interviewing the water department guy. And, um, they have a big project going on right now. We're there replacing water mains in some area of Springfield. And he said, uh, that the city of Springfield has an annual budget of five million dollars to replace water mains.
Yep.
They budget five million dollars a year to replace water mains.
Wow.
So nice to be a big city. And of course, they probably have more than seventy miles of water lines too. All right, um, we don't have any old business, new business. We have ordinance twenty-two-one-zero-zero-seven, establishing wards.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we put, uh, ordinance twenty-one dash zero-zero-seven on the floor for discussion.
One second.
I'll second it.
You led a motion to put ordinance twenty-two-one-zero-zero-four.
Oh, seven.
Oh, seven. I'm, uh, seven on the floor for discussion. Pat, seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, all right. This is a short ordinance, so I'll go ahead and read it. An ordinance establishing wards for the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Whereas Arkansas Code annotated ACA fourteen forty-four one-on-one states that, as soon as practicable, after an incorporated town becomes a city of the second class, the city council shall form the city into the number of wards that to it will seem to best serve the interests of the city. And whereas said code also states that it shall be the duty of the council to see that each ward has as nearly an equal pop, uh, population as to each other, as to each of the other wards, as would best serve the interest of taxpayers of the city. And whereas on the twenty-third day of March twenty-twenty-one, the Secretary of the State of Arkansas certified Holiday Island to be a city of the second class. And whereas the estimated population of the wards are Ward One, seven-hundred-and-twenty-one, Ward Two, seven-hundred-and-forty, and Ward Three, seven-hundred-and-ninety-six. Now being ordained by the city council of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, that the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas shall be organized into three wards according to the map and legal descriptions attached to this ordinance. And to, and that upon approval of this ordinance, the attached map and legal description will be filed with the clerk of Carroll County, Arkansas. Uh, and the final statement is passed and approved by the city council of Holiday Island, Arkansas, and the state pub. But we're going to do three readings on this ordinance. So that date of, between blank until the third reading. And if you look at, for those of you who have a copy of the ordinance, the legal description and the ward map is attached to the ordinance. But is there any discussion on this? This is basically the result of our workshop.
Yeah, we went over this pretty, pretty detailed, um, workout.
Right.
And I think it's changed since then.
If there's no need for further discussion, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the ordinance.
Could we approve it or we redo more times?
We, we approved the first reading.
Oh, okay. I'll make a motion if you approve the first reading.
entertain a motion that we approve the first reading of ordinance twenty-two-one-zero-zero-seven.
I'll second it.
Ken, I'll second it. We'll follow over.
Okay. Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elway.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
All in paper, your honor.
Okay. Then we will take this up again in our next meeting.
There's a lot of stuff going on. Uh, the Census Bureau has released the twenty-twenty data. And I, you know, when I talk, kind of, you know, we're talking in Thai, you should kind of talk like, you know, if they were to use twenty-twenty data, I don't, I don't.
I don't know that. Good call, the clerk.
You make that decision.
As a horse in the race.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know if she.
The law says that it's up to the city council to make the determination. We got the population estimate from the Arkansas Geographical Information Service. I believe that until there are official census numbers published, then there's.
Well, they, they published them someplace. I just don't know. You know, they were publishing, you know, on the paper, you know.
Yeah, there was something came out through the municipal league today about it that generated about sixteen emails that said that the numbers are all wrong. Somebody took, somebody took the data from the Census Bureau that was hard to follow and figure out, I guess, and downloaded it into Excel. And there's a reasonable amount of questions as to whether or not that data came across, you know, accurately. There were several, several people have already said that they can't be right, so.
I opened that link from the municipal league and went to the website and it had Holiday Island as a Census designated place. So it's not even appropriate for our boundary.
Not even close.
Right. So we would have to do a population estimate and, um.
And, you know, that's, you know, that's what she was talking about.
Yeah.
If it doesn't come up, good.
Yeah, I mean, the original, the first numbers that came out from the Census Bureau showed that the population of the Holiday Island Census designated place only changed by twenty people, which means it would have zero impact whatsoever on this analysis. Um, however, the spreadsheet, the Excel spreadsheet that came out today said that the, uh, Holiday Island Census designated place population was twenty-five-hundred-and-one-five-thirty-three, twenty-five-thirty-three.
That means we'll get more money.
And, and if you apply the same ratio that the Census Bureau or that GIS used to determine our population before, to estimate our population, then that would put our, um, population right now at twenty-four-hundred-and-twelve or something like that. But, and I was, I was all happy about that until I saw the long list of emails about how this can't be right and that can't be right.
Except that we don't want to hit twenty-five-hundred, do we?
Well, that's what I said to Wes. And, uh, the good news might be that we'll get more turnback money because we have more people. The bad news is we're getting dangerously close to twenty-five-hundred people, which is the tipping point to go to a city of first class. And we're not ready for that. But I guess we'd have ten years to worry about it.
No, yeah.
Until the next census.
That's true.
And I don't know that that change is automatic either. There was somebody questioned that at a clerk's thing that I attended last week. And they said, well, if you go over, that doesn't mean that you're going to be a city of first class.
Yeah, cities by ordinance are going to like to stay a city of the second class.
I don't think so. I've seen something that says that a city of the second class can request to be upgraded to a city of first class. Like Eureka Springs is a city of the first class and they only have twenty-two thousand people. But, um, I've never seen anything that said you can stay a city of the second class.
Okay.
The, the, the whole point of, the whole point of the municipal league putting this, these numbers out was so that people had budget numbers to start estimating their turnback money for next year and stuff like that. And, uh, but there was a big disclaimer on it that said, none of these numbers are official until the Treasury Department says they're official. So, um, so I just kind of put it all on the back burner again. So we're going with these, with the twenty-ten census, again, the most recent.
Now.
Population estimate.
I had had a question on these wards. If people assist tonight, uh, ordinance on our posting boards, but that's not the case because if I posted, it's law.
You don't post, yeah, it's not approved.
Right.
This is posted on the web. The description and the map are both on the web, on our city website.
Okay. Yeah, it's been out there for, for everybody.
And it's, the, the map itself is a PDF and so it's enlargable so you can make it bigger so you can see the detail of the street and the color of the bricks.
I think it's very impressive to have this map because you can really see exactly where you are based upon looking it up on one of the streets, whatever street you live on. You can see what ward you're on very easily.
Yeah. And then on wards. All right, moving on to ordinance number twenty-two-one-zero-zero-eight. An ordinance to permit the on-premises sale and consumption of liquor by the drink in the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Do I have a motion to put it on the floor for consideration?
I move that we put on the floor, number twenty-two-one-zero-zero-eight.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Gary, this is your baby, you want to read it?
I will do. Ordinance number twenty-two-one-zero-zero-eight. An ordinance to permit the on-premises sale and consumption of liquor by the drink in the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Whereas there are restaurants and establishments within the city of Holiday Island which are in need of an ordinance permitting the sale of liquor by the drink in order to obtain the required alcoholic, alcoholic beverage control, a decision permit to sell liquor by the drink. And whereas the ability of those establishments to obtain a permit to sell liquor by the drink will be financially beneficial and will help them be more competitive with similar businesses in other cities in the region. And whereas Arkansas Code annotated, uh,
Same going on, Brian.
You have to check your email before you file.
Check your email, Zach, you know.
Whereas Arkansas Code annotated three-nine, uh, three-dash-nine if the city is located in a county that has authorized the sale of intoxicated liquor. And has approved such sales in the county. And Holiday Island became a city of the second class on March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. And, and whereas in order to provide a safe environment for the sale and provision of alcohol, as well as to comply with applicable state law and to promote the orderly operation of business, the city council adopts the following regulations. Now being ordained by the city council of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, that. section one, the sale of liquor by the drink at restaurants, which meet the definition of a restaurant is found in title four, subtitle B, section four dot six of the ABC regulations. And said establishment of alcohol by the drink is. Of Arkansas and nothing in this ordinance shall contradict the laws of Arkansas and the most current state code and/or the regulations of the ABC. Passed approved by the city council, Holiday Island, Arkansas on this day of August seventh, eighteen.
So again, that's potentially blank because we're going to do this one in three readings on the next today. It's scheduled, so we'll get to that.
Jerry, show you how little I know about this thing. Just out of curiosity, the permit is actually going to come from the state of ABC. So we have, we as a city have any responsibility to like check their sales or?
No.
That's all done by the state.
That they apply for the permit. It's obviously paying the taxes, the requirements for that permit.
Other than five thousand dollar permit. So we don't, we don't have to go down there and make sure they're fixing.
Don't you ask them?
I was looking at three to one.
I mean, we, we can set hours and, and what all, but I mean, that's really all we can do.
We don't have to do any policing whatsoever.
Well, I mean, you know, in some cities they have a police force out where alcohol is being consumed, closing hours, but no.
Police, you know, police are, are deputies again and, you know, and check. Or force state law, but I mean, we don't have to.
No.
Okay. The only thing I've ever seen do is check for underneath thirty. We've occupied the streets of Holiday.
I would have to stick to that was pretty good. That was a good one.
I had, I had no questions on it after, after I saw your revisions, if they did, if you want to review the security thing. So we're going to read it again then.
The.
We have stuff, have a motion to.
I have a question.
Motion we approve.
Well. Can we have some more discussion on it?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Well, I, you know, when you and I talked briefly about how we could expedite this, I think you had some ideas mentioned just a second ago. I mean, you want to put those out now?
I can, yeah, I can, it, it basically comments that came from, from our attorney, Justin. Which, by the way, our attorney did review this and he made some edits to it, which is why there was a addition that came out late this afternoon.
And it's also been by the ABC that's on that one as well.
So, uh, when, when, when Jerry first started, first brought this up, I was very, I was nervous about the fact that, that there may be a lot of things that we don't know about this. You know, that it may, it may not be as simple as just passing a simple ordinance. But I have been convinced that it is just as simple as passing an ordinance. You can make this as complicated as you want to be because I looked at P. Ridge and in P. Ridge's municipal code, they have, I think it's eighteen pages dedicated to this.
Well, and, and most of that and the one, one of the ones I looked at from Farmington and Elkins, they repeated, uh, as part of their municipal code, the, the actual language of those state codes.
Yeah, they were just, just cut and pasting the ABC requirements into their municipal code, which to me is just, you know, word stuffing and, you know, we don't, we don't need to do that. Justin did bring up that if we wanted to, we could have included in with this a, the authorization for offsite or off premises consumption. In other words, liquor stores and that the city could authorize that at the same time.
I thought you said at the last meeting, we couldn't do that.
Well, I, I asked Justin that question. I said, I, I said, I thought the county regulated how many, you know, packaged goods permits there were available and that the county, the rumor is in Carroll County that the churches bought up a lot of them to limit the number of liquor stores that you can have. I don't know if that's true or not, but I guess we should probably find out. He said that if, if we added in our ordinance, well, first of all, nobody'd be able to open a liquor store in Holiday Island without us having it in an ordinance. So if somebody wants to someday, they think that they can get a permit, then we'll have to pass another ordinance. But he said that, you know, our passing an ordinance could prompt somebody to go to ABC. And the number of, of permits that are issued for, for off premises consumption is, is based on a ratio of population, so many, so many facilities for so many people. And with the new census and everything else, he said there may be, you know, Carroll County may be justifying more licenses. So just because we put it in here doesn't mean that somebody can get a permit to open up a liquor store. But it could crack the door open for somebody to try.
But it sounds like the county is the area of record for determining how many licenses and it doesn't matter about a city. Like Eureka, Eureka Springs has three or four liquor stores.
They got in there really quick before the churches bought them off.
Well, I, I would, I would say that we would want to add that this time.
No, I told, I told Justin that, you know, the draft ordinance that he sent back to me had it in there. And I said, I'm going to take that back out because I don't think we're ready to address that right now. He also said that all cities have a privilege license. Which is a nice way of saying it'd make you cough up a little money to be able to sell liquor. And I said, we were going to leave that out for now too.
Yeah.
Someday we may do that, but right now, about it, this.
Yeah, the, the three that I looked at all had business permits that establishments had to have, but we don't have that.
Right, that's what I.
I think this is a, an economic thing.
We want them to compete with the richest.
Yeah, and I mean, they've made a substantial, them and, and other restaurant owners that have opened here have made substantial investments and, you know, I, I'm, I, I wanted to throw it out in discussion whether this is eligible for a emergency. It may not be, but I think it's, you know, Tana and Jerry are here. Got any questions or entertain listening to them about?
What are the requirements again for calling an emergency? Just we call it an emergency?
Just we call it an emergency, but we've been advised by at least the municipal league to not make everything an emergency. But what I wanted, what I was starting to suggest we do with this is call a special meeting for two weeks from now to have the second reading on this. And then in the September meeting, we could have the third reading. And in the meantime, we have to pass an ordinance that Justin has been sending me. That's called a referendum ordinance. State law requires that, that once we pass an ordinance, that it doesn't go, go into effect for ninety days unless the city passes a referendum ordinance that says that it can go into effect in thirty days. Thirty days is the least that the law allows. So, and, and I don't know if that is dependent on the type of, of ordinance that you're trying to pass. You know, it was my understanding that if you declared something an emergency, that it was effective immediately approval. Now with Justin talking about this referendum ordinance thing, I got to do a little more studying on that. Either way, we're not declaring this an emergency. So it'll take effect thirty days after our third reading.
So more, more about that referendum ordinance. Does that, would every ordinance you pass, after you pass that referendum ordinance go into effect in thirty days rather than ninety?
I'll know more about that when I see.
So you don't know, okay.
The ordinance and talk to Justin more about it. It's first, and I talked on the Zach norm, it was the first that I heard of any such thing. So we're kind of learning how to go here. But I think that's the fastest that we can act on this.
Well, I, I'll just say that the, we call it that. The, whereas the ability of establishment to obtain a permit to benefit them financially and will help them to be more competitive with similar businesses in other cities, that was taken from the Farmington ordinance and as their reason for calling it an emergency. Now, you know, I.
Do we have an emergency? Okay, we do.
Could we, in two weeks, could we wait the second reading and pass the third? I don't know if that's possible.
Or do we have to wait two weeks?
When we, when I was on the Heisen board, we did, sometimes we did all three readings in one meeting.
Well, in, in, in some, in other meetings, we, we suspended the third readings and and then we, we declared some emergencies.
We did that for the planning commission.
Yes, I think we, we voted to suspend the rule.
Six.
It had an emergency clause in it too. So it became effective on that day. And I modeled that after a couple of other ordinances that I found from Arkansas cities.
You know, by the September, I see no problem with that.
Yeah, I, I think in this particular, I understand the urgency from a business owner's standpoint, but I also am anticipating that there may be people in Holiday Island that are opposed to this. And, and if we pass it on an emergency basis with no public hearing, no public discussion whatsoever.
Good point.
I think we're, we're asking for trouble. So I, I think the best we can do is, it's, it's, it is possible that at the next meeting we'll, we, that we could, in, you know, in a week or two weeks, we could schedule a special meeting, do the second and third reading in the same meeting and pass the, you know, the referendum ordinance.
I just.
Has anybody had any comment from anybody in the public who's been on the agenda that was posted last week?
I think.
Nothing.
I have a comment. Section two says it should be permitted seven days a week. I come from a community, two separate communities that did not have sales of alcohol on Sundays. And is the seven day a week in Arkansas permit, is it copied from that? It's already permitted?
Yes.
Okay.
Eureka Springs has.
Yeah, Eureka has this.
Seven days a week.
Okay.
In the tourist town, or tourist area, that will happen.
I, I have a question for Jerry and Tana if they want to go to the podium.
I'll let her go. She's a recovering lawyer.
Isn't that a great name?
There is no such thing.
All right, I'm going to the podium.
Yeah, I, I have a question. So if we, once this ordinance passes, do you still have to go back to the ABC board and apply for a permit at that time? Do you have to wait until it passes before you can submit for a permit?
My understanding is there were a couple of ways that we could serve liquor by the drink. One of them involved a very complicated, non-profit with membership. I didn't even hardly let the attorney for ABC get much of it out because it really sounded way more complicated.
Yeah, he, he mentioned that to me, that he declared himself a private club.
Yeah.
And I mean, like what the Hells was operating under. And.
Oh, yeah, that, that's, that's the way every place in Arkansas used to be.
Used to be.
When I lived here in the first time in the eighties, you know, every Holiday Island was a private, private club.
There we go. So what we need would be the easier route would be an ordinance from the city. And fortunately, the city became a city. And so we still have to go through all of the application process for a liquor license. I've been reluctant to do a beer and wine license because I wanted to just do it all at once instead of going back and forth. And I kind of understand it's kind of a day in Little Rock or something to that extent. And the other thing is, well, first of all, thank you all for your service. I mean, it's incredible and thank you so much for, for helping us with this. But we will have to go through the entire process and that can take several months.
Well, that was going to be my next question. How long do you think that takes?
We just don't know how long. I've heard anywhere from three to six months. I, I don't know if it will take that long. I've been generally good about filling out forms, so hopefully, you know, we, we can get an application in there and get it moved through. And we have, I think Jerry and I both have had several conversations with the attorney for ABC. So hopefully we can expedite that. Then in relation to Sunday sales, one of the, our busiest days is Sunday. And so we're very hopeful to be able to have like limousines and what it varies for a brunch type offering on Sundays or the weekends in general. So while I understand that that could be a problem day for some, we also have two very experienced bartenders. And the comments about whether the city would be liable for any sort of issues with alcohol. I'm, I'm hopeful that, that our two will keep a pretty tight brain, well, that they will. They're experienced and have been experienced in large volume bars.
In your setting, is there a requirement from your ABC permit that you separate who gets drinks from others? If there's a family with minors, they're sitting right next to a table?
Well, I don't know as to a per table. Most of the time, what I understand and what I see, and this is more in Oklahoma, is that the actual bar part, twenty one and over, can only get into that part. The way we have our restaurants set up right now, that could easily be ported off. Now, whether or not you could serve a family with children an alcoholic beverage, I, I can't imagine that there would be a restriction on that, but there could be. I just don't know.
It's all about appearances, you know, whether, whether it's a table with twenty one year olds or it's a table of one twenty one year old and the rest of her eighteen year old and they all look twenty one.
Well, carding people will be a big deal. We will not sell minors. One of the vestiges of my recovery from being an attorney is I like to do things legally. But I would tell you.
Did you pick that up after you were?
Let me tell you, that's not every attorney's philosophy. Bending the law sometimes, but I, I would hardly endorse taking the time not doing an emergency. We do want to do this well, given any sort of loopholes that could be exploited.
I think that we need to stand off and do a reading by the end of September. And that difference, I don't want to. Well, yeah, but I understand Dan's point, but do we have to wait two weeks? Do we have like a special half an hour meeting and have a, in a week and then, and then our final reading in September?
We can have a meeting next week and do the.
I said she's got three months or more afterwards.
Yeah, see, we're looking at the good possibility. We're looking at, it's possible, it depends on what state Arkansas does. It may be spring before we get a deal. And the longer it takes, it just is what it is. But we don't want to, we don't want to rock the boat. Whatever you guys feel like is comfortable, we will come to abide by that and back a hundred percent.
Dan, here's a thought. You could, if you're worried about the public not being able to know about this, why don't we just have a public hearing? And, you know, post it as a special meeting or a, yeah, special meeting sort of thing.
Public hearing?
I would post it not as a hearing, but.
Workshop or whatever you want to call it.
Just get as much advertising for the special meeting as we can.
So that people know that this issue is on the table and they could hear about it at a meeting via Zoom, via public, whatever you want. That would take care of it, and then we could expedite the process.
I mean, no matter what, we're gonna be accused of people not knowing what we were doing.
Well, that's not unless they.
I know, I know, I know, but that's.
I think, I think that would solve the problem and it would, it would take care of the issue. I mean, you know, we would be forthcoming, we'd have a public hearing available to anybody who wanted to make a comment about it for input into the decision-making process.
But this would be a special meeting then that you.
Call it whatever you want. Yeah, well, you wouldn't have to. You could make it a workshop where you don't take action, or you could make it a special meeting.
You gotta have a meeting if you're gonna have a reading.
But if you make it a special meeting just for this purpose?
I wouldn't do a workshop. I mean, I don't think that, that, just calling it a workshop instead of a special meeting, I don't know if that makes any difference.
The point is to advertise that it's for this specific purpose. So that people know what we're talking about.
The special meeting, special meetings can only be for the purpose that the meeting is called.
Yeah.
So if we have a special purpose meeting to consider the second and third reading of this ordinance, and we get all the advertising we can possibly get of that meeting, and then people will have an opportunity to make comments or whatever at that time, then, then we will be doing our due diligence, you know, and making sure that the public was informed as to what we were doing.
That's, that's good. I have a gut feeling why about this many people show up.
Well, I do too.
Who knows?
I do too.
Maybe a hot button issue than I would have thought.
But at least you tried.
Yeah. Holiday Island is a little bit different culturally than a lot of Arkansas probably because we all came here from someplace. You said you had a lot of experienced bartenders. We have a lot of experience on the other side.
Are you saying my tone of conversation is this? I mean, we fulfill all requirements of notifying people. We have special meetings, we'll publicize the meeting, but to call it a public hearing or?
No.
No, just call it a special meeting.
We're just gonna call it a special meeting.
But when we put it out there as a special meeting, you'll make in bold print to consider liquor by the drink.
Now, you could take, it's a legal meeting, and then you could take action.
I understand that. But we've had a couple other special meetings that we send them out, we call them heads and.
Not necessarily, no.
No, but this is probably the first one that we've done that could potentially be controversial with some people.
And if it is, we'll get it out in the open. And there will be people on both sides speaking, I'm sure.
We're not trying to hide it.
That's right.
But I ain't gonna look into it like you.
Well, I mean, we were elected to.
But anyway.
To make decisions and not to do everything by town hall meeting. And first, you know, a little bit of opposition. I'm talking, Ken. What are the requirements?
That's the way to go. I just think the second meeting, we're second reading and have the third reading for September meeting is given up. I just should do both of them at the next special meeting. Get it all.
And I don't disagree with that. I mean, the part I disagree with is to handle it any different than we would any issue that wrapped in special meeting.
Okay.
I mean, I understand, you know, giving people an opportunity, but they had an opportunity today, and we will call it a special meeting where it will be the only thing on the agenda. And if they don't show up, I mean.
That's, I think that's the benefit.
They don't show up, they don't show up.
It's the benefit of having the special meeting.
Yeah, and I, again, I don't disagree with that.
Is there anybody from the, from the press on the Zoom meeting?
Rebecca.
No.
Okay. Because if we could get, if we could have gotten something in the.
The Independent or the Carroll County News isn't here.
All right, let's, let's take this one step at a time then. Let's, if somebody wants to make a motion that we approve the ordinance on the first reading, and then we can set the, once we take our vote, then we can set the time for the special meeting.
I think the motion we approve each regulation in 2021, zero, zero, eight on the first reading.
So for a second.
Dan made the motion, jury seconded it. Any discussion? We'll call votes.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elway.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
All right, motion passed on the first reading. We want to set a date for the, for the special reading.
I just do it a week from tonight? Well, I don't, you know, any, we call a special meeting in today.
Yeah, a week from tonight's good for me.
The week after next, I'm not gonna call on, there'd still be the form.
Well, I'm gonna be gone week after next too, so.
That's, somebody pick a date.
A week from tonight would be fine, or a week from yesterday.
That would be the twenty-second. No, the twenty-fourth, excuse me.
I have a doctor's appointment with the vet bill at two thirty, but it's not news.
Well, we don't have that special meeting at six o'clock at night.
Do it.
We have the workshop set at like three o'clock in the afternoon. Or we could have it in the morning.
Could do it in the morning. Except if, well, if you want the public here, you might want it at night.
Six o'clock at night, twenty-fourth, six o'clock at night. Sound good?
Works for me.
Or would some, if they're working a little later, be better?
Not six o'clock.
It's okay, I mean.
You're anticipating a big crap?
No.
No. But I also don't want to be.
Oh, no, I'm just, Wes was saying that.
Slipping this sand on everybody.
We'll get it in Friday's e-newsletter, hopefully.
All right. Okay. Hopefully, we're doing you some good.
I think you will, thank you so much.
All right. Okay, I'll roll on that. That's it for new business, public comments?
All right, questions?
Can you get up to the podium just for our benefit? Who are you?
Okay, my name's Alex Markovich, twenty-two Mission Hills.
Okay. Got any water leaks?
No, but I'm gonna give it far a bit. No, that's the second part. Regarding the Department of Agriculture Infrastructure Survey, were there any, I don't know what it entailed. I know you said everything, but is it just water or is it water and sewer?
All we addressed was water.
Okay, all right. So the next part of my question is, does our water system or the pumps, do they have emergency power? And for how long?
There's a diesel, there are diesel generators.
At every pump?
Yeah.
Okay, so what is the coverage? Is it two days, twenty-four hours? How much diesel is stored in there that could allow the pumps to run?
I can't answer that.
I mean, that.
I don't have that information. You'd have to ask Danny Presley, the district manager. We would probably have to ask Dan Trader, the water department guy.
I think it's something that's important, and we should have it longer than, let's say, twenty-four hours. You know, if you can get the funds, that's definitely important. Because if you're gonna go to a place one city, I think there are some federal requirements for water in the cities and also for the sewage in the cities. So, you know, if you can get it covered by a grant, hell, I think you should go for it. I mean, it's just something to think about.
Yeah, I'm sure that, I'm sure that they have a plan. And I don't know what that plan is because I've never asked.
I've been asking, but I didn't ask the people you mentioned. Nobody knows, so. All right, the next question is, you mentioned that paving was, there won't be any paving for this year, but the second part of that question is, when they do the repairs on the water leaks, are they going to pave over those spots? Because that's not happening. Only a few instances, when somebody complained, you know, then it might happen. I mean, Mission Hills is pretty much all the water leaks.
And here again, that's the district, not the city. So I'm, I'm kind of speaking.
That's what I was asking, because I didn't know if the, you mentioned the street funds, okay, having to pay, I didn't know if that was part of the ICID or the city's.
The city and the, the city and the district share responsibility for road maintenance. You know, primarily what the city is gonna do is the annual paving. The day-to-day maintenance is gonna continue with the district. But I, in defense of the district, they were very short-handed all summer. They just recently were able to hire a couple of guys. And I've noticed that there's a lot of combo patching going on. A lot of road ditches got mowed recently and stuff. So they're trying to catch up. They, they're well aware of the fact that Mission Hills is all covered. And unfortunately, we spent, Linda, you and I were both on the board the year when we repaved all that up there, but we spent, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars repaving the streets up there. And then, you know, the next week, we started cutting holes in it.
Well, you know, it wasn't true. It was in some spots they put collars over the leaks and some spots they were replacing pipes. So I don't know how those decisions are being made or.
Yeah, I don't either. If it's a, if it's a small leak, they'll put a clamp over it.
Okay, thank you.
You probably know more about the current status of the situation with the pressure relief valves going to Mission Hills than I do.
There aren't any pressure regulating valves for Mission Hills.
So it's just lousy pipes?
Yeah, basically. It's on, it's, it's at the highest elevation of any water lines in Holiday Island.
I guess that would be true because it is on that ridge top. It is on the ridge top.
The problem with Mission Hills is, this is kind of anecdotal. I don't have hard data on this. But first of all, I have to start with the way the water lines were put in. They ran a six-inch main down Mission Hills or down.
Hillcrest?
Hillcrest. They ran a six-inch main from Holiday Island Drive all the way down Hillcrest down to Mission Hills. And then, and they didn't hook anything up to it. And then they ran a four-inch main on the other side of the street and, and a four-inch main all the way down Mission Hills and hooked all the houses up to the four-inch main. Don't know why. People are probably dead that made those decisions. But according to Dan Trader, we really didn't have a lot of trouble with leaks in that area until we did the repaving. And he thinks that.
Stirred up the.
That just. And, you know, created the leaks. Because it's, it's virtually, there's a whole street cut in front of practically every house in that whole area. And so it's, it's not a pressure-related problem. It's something else, it's something mechanical.
Wow.
And when he said that, that made me real nervous because we got a lot of paving that we're planning on doing over the next few years. And if every time we put asphalt on a road, it's followed up by, you know, months and months of fixing or years and years of fixing water leaks, then I don't know what the answer to the problem is.
Go back to chip and seal.
They're usually about five feet down, I think. Five, six feet.
Doesn't, doesn't hardly.
I mean, not that heavy equipment, I mean, that's over.
I said it's anecdotal. I don't have any cause and effect data, but it's sure, it's sure a fact that, I, well, put it this way. I don't think that Kenny would have agreed to pave Hillcrest and Mission Hills if it had a history of chronic leak problems. And he had no problem with us doing the repaving in that area. But ever since then, it's been nothing but leaks. Although, we haven't had that problem anyplace else where we put asphalt down. We haven't had leaks. So I think it may be the combination of the road work and the four-inch line. We don't hardly ever have a leak on a six or eight water main.
Well, thanks for that explanation.
Okay, next regular meeting is next month.
Mr. Mayor, we didn't ask for public comments on bullet nine.
Oh.
I don't know if there's anything to make.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, we did. We had Alex.
Comments though off of Zoom.
Let me, let me see if there's anything on chat here. Okay. Okay. I don't see any hands raised or anything from the Zoom participants. So, oh, we got one hand raised. Rebecca, you want to unmute yourself? Or maybe she's gonna put it in chat? I'll, I'll look. Okay. She says, let me in on the phone. I don't know what, how to do that. We don't have any phone. You just have to speak into the phone.
Yeah, I think so. There's not a mute.
It appears there's a mute. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say ask to unmute here. Okay, she's, she, her microphone looks active now. Can you speak, Rebecca? Not hearing anything. You want to type a question in chat? She says, I just dialed. She says, I just dialed in.
Yeah, so she wouldn't be able to type anything?
Okay, I don't see anybody waiting to join. Up there it is, there is one here, okay, let me admit her. Okay. Okay. Okay, I'm over it, I'm over it, I'm over it, I'm over it, I'm over it.
Yep. Oh. But, but.
Now, can you hear me? What that? I don't know what all that feedback is. I have plenty of chat. Been typing them through your entire meeting. Even when you asked, is anybody from the press in? So maybe you should read those.
Uh, why don't you just tell me what you want to say right now?
Well, let's see, when you read the ordinance about wards, you did not ask for public comment.
No, we didn't.
You did not.
Did you have a public comment?
When you. No, I'm done now. You can read what you didn't acknowledge when I was in there.
Yeah, Jerry just said we're, we're taking public comments now, so if you wanna make a public comment, feel free.
The chats are not recorded in your mission, that doesn't keep the chats.
Yeah, the, the chats are not kept on file anywhere.
Understood that the comments came now.
So, do you have any more comments? Did she leave? Yeah, she hung up the phone, okay.
All right, let's move on then.
Well, I, I got one, yeah, new council member comments.
Oh, yeah, you had one thing to bring up yet.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not a big issue, IHOP is paying the, uh, the one, the.
Meter.
Well, the, the meter at the front entrance, because we've always sponsored the Christmas tree lights, it's all been rewired now. And now, I guess you've got the streetlights up there. It's not a big, big issue, uh, but do we wanna transfer that to the city, that responsibility for that meter? And, and to give it, I just got the bill for last month, it's eighteen dollars and eighty-six cents, so. Cause it's a spree.
Because it's streetlights and the city sign that IHOP is paying electricity for.
And why would the district now, they do all the other.
Seems like a minor expense.
It's not, well, I know, it's not huge, I don't. I'm just wondering why would we get into it?
It would, you know, it would come out of the roof under it, street fund.
Wouldn't think so.
Streetlights would come out of the street fund?
Um.
Streetlights.
Streetlights probably, uh, again, in the Christmas decorations and stuff, but it's on the same.
It's all at the same circuit.
Probably could.
The, the city doesn't want, the city doesn't wanna pay to power the streetlights, then I'll try to take it up with the district.
Well, it's not a, it's not a big issue. I mean, we can't, really can't discuss it, I'm just gonna ring it up. I have no problem voting to do it at some point.
Are, are you making a motion that the city?
It's not on the agenda.
No, I don't, no, you, it's just a comment.
I just don't discuss it at this point, how do we wanna deal with that? There, there's another possibility, if we can bring it up, it'll be on the agenda for next meeting or whatever. Uh, if the city wants to take over that meter and then present IHOP with the December bill and the January bill, or the January bill, and IHOP pay the difference, which would, roughly replace the Christmas lights. I, I don't care, I mean, it's just for discussion at this point. It's not a huge amount, we've got a budget in IHOP, it's just, now that we've rewired it, you got the city lights, the entrance lights on there.
As far as discussion about city lights, I think there's other intersections in our community that need lighting.
Yeah.
Personally, so I don't know where that's gonna, city's gonna fall on that, but. And we have some public areas down by the Marina, there's just one light there, but it is one intersection, the intersection isn't lit, just the parking lot is.
Which, the city has more responsibility, short-term or long-term.
Okay.
For parking lots, the only streetlights that I'm aware of that are truly streetlights, are those two up like front.
Well, there's a whole bunch.
Aren't they wind up here?
Yes, but they're not, they're not.
Are they working? I don't know, those are.
They're not working. I, I just, you know, do we wanna venture into that? That's why it's.
I could do some checking as to what, what do we come on.
And we do some checking and at the next regular meeting, uh, if you wanna make a motion, then we'll let the council board. We're done.
You know, are there intersections that have safety issues because they're not blinded?
Well, I don't want, I don't want this to.
That's not expanding.
Mission creep here.
Yeah.
We're trying to deal with.
We're, we're.
We got one, one meter, and that is in the parking intersection.
And the reason I brought it up is because it, it, it opens up the conversation for an intersection that's lit and the city's paying for it. So it does open up the opportunity for that discussion. It's not just on the sign, it's lighting and intersection, right?
Right, right now, the district does, in the outdoor lighting, the district.
I, I think, I think it's a big leap from taking over the electric bill for two lights that have been there forever. Versus, um, a study as to what other intersections in Holiday Island need lights, you know, that, that may be, may be on the agenda at some point in the future. But I haven't heard of anybody complaining about, um, unwed intersections.
Well, everybody pushes, they want it, they want streetlight, most people go around controlling that area.
I have a comment as well. The, uh, the approaching Highway twenty-three goes past our front entrance, right? We call it the front entrance, or is it sixty-five, twenty-three? And the speed limit coming around that corner is much higher than the same highway going through Eureka Springs. We as a city, don't we have any input in how fast these traffic goes through our city? Because it's well within our city limits.
We can revisit it now that, now that we are a city.
Okay.
When we were a district, we tried twice to get the state, the Department of Transportation to, uh, to reduce the speed limit. And they come out to do studies and they say that, um, a reasonable person would drive forty-five miles an hour. That most people drive a reasonable speed even if there's no speed limit posted. And they, they call that the reasonable speed. And they find that forty-five miles an hour is the speed limit that a reasonable driver would drive past our front entrance and they.
They don't.
They wouldn't, uh.
They don't, I think, I, you know, I, I thought about this issue too, because when I was on the board a long time ago, when they first got the speed limit up there, and they would not go under the forty-five.
But it's the same highway that goes through Eureka that they cut down to thirty-five and then twenty-five within their city limits.
They did.
I know. And it's a crazy corner when people are sitting there trying to watch the traffic that's coming around the corner and up the hill, and people are being stomping on brakes.
You got the same thing up at the, the other end, people coming from, uh, uh.
From the Missouri.
Missouri line, and they, there's a dip there, and if they're coming sixty, seventy miles an hour and you're pulling out of, uh, the. Not Wolf, I mean, you can see them coming out of Wolf.
Right.
But the entrance.
Into the, into the commercial area.
In that commercial area, I mean, I, that scared me. Uh, I, I think it would be, I, I don't know who to talk to. I don't know. Arkansas Department of Transportation, probably.
Dan, you've talked to them before, haven't you? You've talked to those guys.
It might be different.
State Highway Department.
When we're a city, I think.
I'll have to find out what authority cities have over state highways running through the city.
Well, Eureka must have had some authority.
Just a rural area.
We may very well be able to set the speed limit coming through there. Uh, and with that said, um, eventually, we're gonna have to pass an ordinance setting all of the speed limits and traffic signs and yield signs and everything else. Right now, that's all by county ordinance, we're going to have to run the city ordinance for that.
And, uh, are we done with this issue? You know, who, are we gonna be able to look at that, or?
Was that the speed limit?
Yeah.
I can check.
Uh, probably, probably just ask Aaron, he probably.
No, I'll check.
But I, I've been through some other places that they're not.
I'll call Butch Berry and ask him if they have any authority over the speed limits on Highway twenty-three or Highway sixty-two.
Since it goes right through the middle of town, they probably do.
Sixty-two is slowed down in.
Unless the state does it.
It's slowed down in Huron though.
I don't, I don't know, I've been through some of those towns and, and the, the speed limit on state highways, but I, I don't remember where it was, but it, you know, you know, we need to look at that someday. Um, have you, any more feedback on the paving grant, or is it still?
It's waiting, the, the committee doesn't meet until February, so there's, as far as I know, we're gonna get the money.
Uh, you, I did talk to these circuit judge for.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna, every.
For Carroll and Madison County, and he, and then.
District. District court.
The district judge.
That, that's, not circuit court, district court.
Anyway, he said that, uh, he had been following our progressive, progression. And, uh, he had been doing, he had looked at preliminary, bits of preliminary studies, trying to figure out, you know, how we, he could integrate us into the system. And it seems to be a whole multitude of different ways that, you know, that they handle it. He, he, he explained to me about Green Forest where they have their own court. But he said he would do some additional study and he would get back to us in a couple of weeks, so. Fine, so, and then at that time, we, uh, we can look in and find out.
Because eventually, when we start enforcing our own traffic laws and our own, um, code violations and stuff like that, we will have to have an arrangement with the district court to handle those cases, collect the fines.
Very, very listen to us.
Yeah, I think I knew that. But I've never met the man, but I hear that he's a really, a really good guy.
He was quite lovely.
He's a very nice guy, I bet him.
I stayed out.
Okay, uh, any other, or, uh, council member comments? All right, reg, next regular meeting is nine-twenty, we're gonna have a special meeting on eight-twenty-four, trying to get the agenda through that ASAP. Any announcements? Hearing none, we have a motion to adjourn.
Some of them.
Jury made a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
I'll second.
You can second it, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
More.